To try to limit their remarks to three minutes. And if it's a group, if they would try not to cover the same items multiple times, because we do have the county's business to take care of also. And with that being said, we will start with part one of our public comment. We have two signed up to address an issue or recommendations on Bentley Road in Walton County, and we'll start with David Curran.
Okay.
Okay, David Curran is not here. Okay, how about Trisha Garman?
That's the second.
All right, so that one will not happen this meeting then. Okay, thank you. All right, part two. We have several wanting to make comments on the animal control shelter. And before we do that, I got a little quick comment to make. Walton County's Animal Control Director Sean Morris was assistant of UGA law professor Lisa Malot, and the county attorney are working on revisions to the animal control ordinances. In the meantime, the county is actively enforcing its existing ordinances which are effectively, which are effective at addressing many instances of animal mistreatment or abuse. We are in court once a month with multiple citations, and unfortunately, we keep having violations on those issues. But please come up and we'll go by the way they you called in and tell us what you want to. And please, in the issuance of the county being able to do its business, let's don't go over the same thing multiple, multiple times. So Cheryl Sullivan, please. State where you live and your name. Unfortunately, this one's got to make.
If you'll just give your name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Cheryl Sullivan. I live in Auburn, Georgia, 417 Chosson Court, and I am with Max Friends Animal Rescue. And I would actually like to relinquish my time to my partner so that she can further our message.
We don't combine times, but your partner's welcome. Who's your partner's name? Is she on the list?
I am. Savannah Green.
Which name?
Savannah Green.
Savannah Green. Okay, Savannah, come up.
Hi, my name is Savannah Green. My address is 189 North Fifth Avenue. I live in Winder. I'm also part of Max Friends Animal Rescue, and I just had a few things to say today. First, I would like to thank you all for allowing us to come out and do some public comments. We do have some rescue experience on this topic with Walton. We do pull animals from them, so I just want to be able to kind of discuss our point of view on the things we've seen in the shelter pulls that we've had. I would like to thank you guys. My name is Savannah, obviously. I'm a founding member of Max Friends Animal Rescue. We are a registered 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and we are foster-based. This means we do not have a building we operate from. Instead, we have a network of volunteers who open up their homes to care for the animals. We have been in operation since March of this year, so we're fairly new. We have multiple organizations we work with through animal rescue, and we've been a part of those for several years. Max has been working with Walton County Animal Shelter since May, and we have made our, we made our first official poll then in May. So anything we have to say will be from May to now. The first thing I would like to address is the utilization of the shelter and why euthanasia is being pushed when the facility isn't to capacity. These are things we've physically gone in and seen when we've made shelter pulls. Max Friends receives plea emails from the director of the shelter, Mr. Bill Wise. We recently pulled our third dog from Walton Shelter, and it was obviously an amazing dog. So glad we were able to do it and do our part. Our third poll was scheduled for pickup on a Friday. We went in, and we did the pickup. On the way, my partner and I were discussing the potential to pull other animals if we had the resources. We asked staff if we arrived, if we could go back and observe the cat's behavior, take pictures, you know, do that sort of thing, so we could come in and see if we could pull. Anytime we receive an email from Walton as the last call, we assume that was due to the fact that the shelter was full. As soon as we found out this was not the case, upon arrival, we walked back into the open adoption runs. We counted at least eight empty runs out of 16 that we could see, and with three to four more runs being emptied the following Monday, when those dogs were being picked up by other rescues. We then would, we then went to look at the cats, and to our surprise, only 50% of those runs were being utilized, and this was on a Friday. We planned to raise funds to be able to pull them. We went back to take pictures, this sort of thing. I know usually it's not open to the public, but being a rescue, we were able to go. There should be no reason for a shelter to euthanize a perfectly healthy dog or cat. It is not the animal's fault that our community has failed them. We have to do better as a community together to end the cycle of birth, no spay or neuter, ending up at the shelter and unfortunately end with euthanasia for so many. Let's move to the next concern, area of concern, the lack of vetting being done. Oh, that's fine. I will end. Yes, I, the rest of my topics will be discussed, so I appreciate your time. Thank you guys so much.
All right, thank you. Brittany Buckley.
I'm from Clark County, and I've been asked to speak about the practical and economic reality of not regulating dog breeding and welfare in Walton County, and to encourage a proactive approach to a problem that is only going to worsen with current trends. Here's some data to think about. The average house price in the county is $365,000 and rising, with an average monthly cost of over $1,000. The average income in the county is $23,000, with a 12% below poverty rate, about 12,000 people and growing, due to the cost of living. What this means is you have more people renting, unable to build fences to contain dogs, and unable to afford the cost of dog ownership, resulting in increasing surrenders. This shift is happening around the country, and shelters are seeing crisis-level numbers and low adoptions. Even in my own county shelter, which has an over 90% live release rate, it, we're struggling. We're getting dogs that had never come in before, like all the doodles and fancy things. Walton County is already behind on outcomes for this community, which is why we keep bringing attention to the problem. Current law treats dogs like a cheap disposable commodity when they are a 10-plus-year commitment and a public health hazard in the wrong hands. If local authorities don't act, things will only worsen, and more pressure on the shelter may lead to incidents of negative media attention, like the situation that just happened in McDuffie County that resulted in their shelter being closed and lots of scrutiny on their commissioners. We don't want to see packs of strays, rabies outbreaks, and more bite incidents as a result of people dumping animals when the shelter is constantly full and not taking animals. This isn't only about the animals. This is about human welfare and quality of life. Today's Americans expect animals to be protected. It's cheaper to prevent a problem than to fix it. The county needs to send a message to prevent taxpayer dollars from being wasted before the situation gets out of hand. Common sense says those who can't afford to house dogs properly shouldn't be allowed to chain them, and definitely shouldn't be allowed to breed and profit off them, because it becomes everyone's problem when they don't want the dog anymore. There must be consequences to enforce responsibility. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Melissa Bowen Bowden, I'll pronounce it right, hopefully.
Can I hand this to you? I want to take a look at those. So I wrote out this long speech tonight, and I'm not even going to use it, because this is the last place I want to be tonight. I have a dog at home that's literally dying, taking his last breath as I stand here, fighting for dogs that don't even belong to me. I have been ignored for 365 days from almost everyone on this panel. One year ago, I stood right here in this spot, and I told you all about a dog named Graham. It's the first picture, Mr. Thompson, that you have, the green. That's Graham. Fast forward a year, we're dealing with the same thing we dealt with a year ago with a dog, because there's not the proper ordinances put in place that animal control can enforce. A little dog named Brighton that we discovered in April is in a small cage that you have the picture of, Mr. Kirkland. That dog stayed in that cage from April till August. Animal Control went out there over 20 times. They cited her for what they could, for inhumane treatment, but left the dog there. Who got the dog? One of the citizens. I don't know where she's at. She went and paid $100 for the dog, the same thing I had to do a year ago for Graham. Why are your citizens, that already pay taxes, having to come out of pocket and pay for these dogs because there are not ordinances put in place to protect them? There is no good reason. Every other county around us, every other county around us, has these ordinances in place. We had a lady speak last year for an hour. Y'all assured us that y'all were going to sit down with her. What is her name? I can't think. Lisa? Lisa Malo?
I just announced at the beginning of this meeting that they've been meeting with her. Did you not listen?
I wasn't, I wasn't in here when it started.
Well, get your facts right. We have been working with her constantly, and we're...
Not done. This is a, this has been 365 days that I have, I've emailed, I've emailed you all, Mr. Banks, Mr. Shellnut, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Kirkland, all of you. No response, maybe from one or two of you. Calls, emails, ignored. Why am I, as a citizen, having to pay for dogs to protect them? This is not right. And then, when, when I call and I report a dog, you know what happens then? They give my information to the person that I called on. So then what happens? People don't want to call. I run the Facebook page called The Forgotten Animals of Walton County, Georgia, and I cannot tell you how many times a day. I'm a mother, a grandmother. I work. I have a family, and I'm doing all this for free. Not free at the shelter now, because I can't volunteer there. I'm not allowed to volunteer, but yet I can go out in the community and pay for dogs. It doesn't make any sense. It just, it doesn't make any sense. And after all this time, I would think that y'all just need to show your heart a little bit and let you know, and I'll close with this. Compassion for animals is intimately connected with goodness of character, and it may be confidently asserted that he who is cruel to animals cannot be a good man.
All right, thank you. Sally Mansour.
Mona Stevens was not able to come tonight. Her husband has had emergency triple bypass, so I'd like to speak for her also. Can I have her time?
Well, go ahead with yours, Sally.
Well, again, mine is not going to be three minutes. Anyhow, so we meet again. In 2014, 2018, and 2019, groups have presented to this commission asking for a no-on-attended tether ordinance, as well as a minimum kennel size ordinance. The reason that we were given for not changing these was that Walton Animal Control needed more money to hire employees and buy new vehicles. The new vehicles have since been purchased, and a second full-time director has been added, but full-time chaining and very small pens and crates are still allowed. Passing these ordinances actually decreases the amount of calls from concerned residents. We have numerous examples of dogs dying on their chains and trolleys in Walton, either from strangulation or neglect. It's not good. Permanent tethering is extremely humane, inhumane, and illegal in the vast majority of counties around Walton. It puts the public at risk of being attacked by frustrated, unsocialized dogs. It renders dogs vulnerable to attacks from other animals, has a direct correlation to criminal activity, domestic abuse, and child abuse. Again, we have many examples of this, and it lowers property values. Hall, Barrow, and Forsyth Counties all passed the no tether ordinance along with a minimum kennel size ordinance in one meeting. One meeting? One meeting.
One.
Okay. The vast majority of dogs in animal control are pit bulls and pit bull mixes. About 90% of them are not spayed or neutered. I'm constantly contacted, Mona's constantly contacted, with people who need to find home for their dogs. Again, I believe that Brittany brought up the economic situation. Rescues are completely overwhelmed. We need a moratorium on all pit bull breeding. I love pit bulls, but something's got to change. The overpopulation problem we have is a heavy burden on taxpayers, and there are solutions for it. There's also the lack of low-cost and free spay-neuter services in our county is just a huge issue. Mona and I secured grant money from a foundation in California, and they, well, they've helped us spay and neuter about 300 pit bulls. We don't have any more money from them now, but pet owners can't afford $300 to $400 for a spay-neuter surgery. They want these animals, they, they, they want to give them love, but they can't afford $300 to $400. So we were thrilled to be able to help with that. The problem is, is that something Walton Animal Control could do? Because I have flyers for you guys that I've made up. The Walton County budgets and populations are almost exactly what Barrow Counties are. I have 2021, 2022, and 2023 budgets. They're almost the same. When someone adopts a dog from Walton County, the dog is, and I guess cat also, is given dewarmer. The adopters are given a $15 voucher to be used for a rabies vaccine done somewhere else. They require adopters to spay and neuter their new animal on their own within 30 days or face an arrest warrant. So it uses up the manpower of animal control to go look for these people if they don't do it within 30 days. They have public viewing hours of the animals. It's for 17, 17 and a half hours a week with no Saturdays. This is what Barrow does, for the same budget. I'm going on with Mona's. I have to talk.
All right, if you could wrap it up.
I'm, I'm going to do my three minutes for Mona. She signed up. She signed up.
No, you're not.
Okay.
It's three minutes per person.
Mona signed up. She was approved to speak.
Where is Mona?
Did you not hear what I said? Her husband had emergency bypass surgery. I can talk for three more minutes. Excuse me, this is very important. For Barrow, with the same budget, they have enforced the no-on-attended tethering chaining ordinance. They enforced a minimum kennel size ordinance of 12 by 12 per dog. They spay-neuter every animal before adoption, saving adopters tons of money and greatly reducing the chance of additional litters, accidental litters. They microchip all animals, greatly increasing the rate that a stray animal is quickly returned to its owner. They vaccinate all the animals, saving the adopters money and greatly decreasing the amount of diseases that can be quickly spread, some fatal like parvo. They allow volunteers, actually, they love their volunteers. They have community events, an active Facebook page. They have a trained staff that evaluates fearful animals, reducing the amount of many of them being labeled as aggressive. They have public viewing of 36 hours a week. Walton has 17 and a half. That includes Saturdays. They allow anonymous reporting of abuse so that neighbors do not have to worry about retaliation. They provide adoption counseling with 14 documents sent home with adopters, including what to expect and how to deal with issues with their new family member, and they require appointments to surrender a pet. It's just night and day. Anyway, I'll just wrap this up. Walton desperately needs a humane society. That's been talked about, but nothing's come of it. Let's see, what else? There are a lot of pit bull owners who refuse to spay and neuter because they are trying to constantly breed their dogs and make quick untaxable money. The taxpayers are left to clean up their mess. Best backyard breeders should be required to obtain a business license and be approved for a breeding permit. That income is going to be used to go to the important needs of animal control. One man from Social Circle who had been breeding his dogs for 16 years told us that spaying female dogs makes them aggressive. Nothing could be farther from the truth. This man has probably been the cause of thousands of dogs to be born in our county with no restrictions. Anyway, there's dog fighting. We, one of the people that we helped tell us about dog fighting in Walton. We're raising kids around this. Walton could spend a message that animal abuse will not be tolerated. That's not hard to do. Put up a billboard. It will not be tolerated. That's basically it, except, I, thank you. I have, I have much more, but I won't say it right now. The thing that bothers me, Chairman Thompson, is that you just told Melissa that y'all are working out with Lisa Malo. It does not take a year to work on this. It doesn't. It doesn't take years and years and years and years to work on this.
Okay.
It doesn't.
Your six minutes are up now.
Okay, well, I hope you listened, because this group's not going away. It's actually getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and we're, we're going to keep coming until something changes.
Rangier.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm kind of new to this, but I'm not new to rescuing pit bulls. I have handouts.
Okay, please pass them.
I'll take them for you.
June, where do you live?
Tipperary Circle, Monroe.
Yes.
I've lived there for 20 and a half years. I own my house, so I pay the taxes. I also have this first picture here. This is one of the dogs that I rescued. As you can see, this is what happens when dogs are chained out as young dogs, and they grow. The collars, the chains grow into their necks, and this happens all the time. I saw other pictures of this, but this is my own personal dog. She is sweet as could be if you, she was named Rest Angel, and she is. And yes, she's a pit bull, but sweet as they could be, but it, it's what humans do to the dogs that causes the problem. It's improper breeding, inbreeding, and abuse. And then, of course, the ones that get to be fighters. I don't know if that's the right word, but anyway. I had a couple of suggestions there on the page where you also say a picture of that same dog walking with a cat that I also rescued off the corner of Troy Smith and 78, at five weeks old, who was dumped. And they, they are the best of buddies. Anyway, my list is, I only got six items on it. Some of that has already been covered, but we need to do something, as has been already expressed, with Walton County Animal Control, so that we have a better way of dealing with things. I won't say anything more, because you've already heard it. You've also heard about banning of tethering and leashing, because that's what causes this. It's cruel, and eventually, if that happened to you, what would that do to your personality? And that can make for danger. Sometimes it doesn't. I'm lucky. I've had Angel now for almost eight years. She, the surgery was actually done at Walton County, or Walton Animal, blah, Talk Right, Monroe Animal.
Monroe Animal Clinic.
Yes. I'm not used to, you know, talking, but I felt this was very important to bring up. Already mentioned about standards of outdoor kennel sizes, so that they can not be laying in...
Yeah, that's been mentioned several times.
Yeah, I know. Requirements for breeders to be licensed, so that we don't have this continual thing happen, already mentioned. Allow the Walton County Animal Shelter to have the use of volunteers who could help with some of the problem, because there are many of us that would. And if an animal is chipped, great, then you've got some way to deal with them. If not, perhaps this is something to be done that is not expensive. It's just an idea. It will help.
Okay. We appreciate it.
And then the last thing on here, I got off of, I think this was off of Facebook, but it talks about Lee County. So just, you know, look at it. It's talking about how the police are working with some of these dogs, which would be another thing to kind of help the situation. I know Joe Chapman and his wife, who works at my dentist that I've been going to for, hmm, since 1979.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's kind of it.
Okay.
But we're concerned and try, and by the way, I have another pit bull rescue. She was one and a half years old and bred already twice. Mange, heartworms, every kind of worm-worm you could have.
All right.
They're abused.
We appreciate it. We, we have some other speakers, and you've run past your three minutes. Thank you, ma'am.
Not done.
I appreciate it. Richard Keel.
Hi, guys. My name is Richard Keel. I started adopting and fostering and taking care of pit bulls, but really all dogs, about 18 years ago over in Gwinnett County. And I adopted my first pit bull breed of sorts. There are a lot of issues, and obviously you guys have, have gone over them. They've been brought forward by people, by, by other people. The one, I, it, it doesn't make sense to me. I mean, I'm a small business owner, and so if I have, if somebody comes up to me and says, hey, I'd like to give you a day of my time just to help you with what you do, you know, unless they, you know, only have one arm, I'm going to, you know, as a plumber, I'm going to have somebody give me a hand. It would seem like it just doesn't make sense to me why, why Walton County doesn't allow volunteers and seems to be, seems to be very closed down. We, everybody in this room, I'm sure at some point or another, if they're not right now, has dealt with an abused dog that, that has come out of somewhere here in Walton County or Steve Monroe or something like that. And we want to help. We want to, we want to, we don't want to sit here and scream and yell and, and, I mean, just, you know, yell at you guys behind the desk over there. We want to be able to, to help with, with solutions. And like I said, it, the, the, the lack of willingness to allow people to volunteer, it just doesn't, it doesn't seem conceivable, especially with the amount of people that are, everybody in here, I'm sure, would volunteer a day, a month, or something like that, to help out. And, you know, eventually what it ends up doing is, I've got three amigos at home right now, and all of them were severely abused, and I don't know if I could ever give them or foster them or adopt them to, or, you know, home them with anybody except for maybe a single, if they were just a single dog. You know, one dog was, well, one dog was blue. He's now, his, his name is Brutus. He's actually outside my truck right now. And Brutus was, you know, up on a big chain, and, yeah, that's Brutus. And then, you know, Harrison... And then, you know, Harrison was actually chained up on an empty lot in an enclosure, but with a very, I mean, an enclosure, I mean, a fence around him, but an enclosure smaller than this desk, this lectern here that, for him to stay in. And when he ran into my van, because that's what happened, he, I took him to the vet. And I mean, he, he had a bowl of water and a bowl of what you could see, what, what looked to be food somewhere on the property, but the bowl of water just had, you know, maggots flopping around in there. And come to find out, he had every single worm, I think, a dog could possibly have, and maybe some that humans can get too. It was crazy. He had heartworms so bad that you could, they could see the larvae in his bloodstream. So anyways, the, these, we want to help. These dogs are, you know, we, we want to be able to, we've helped as much as we can in a private capacity. We'd like to be able to offer, you know, assistance moving forward. We won't, we don't want to just, you know, like I said, yell at you guys. We want to be able to, to have solutions here. I mean, that's, that's, and, and be part of the solution here, not part of the, of just you guys getting talked at hard for an hour or so about, about these animals. So I, I don't have much more, I don't have anything more to say. I just, I, like I said, I, I really wanted to harp on the volunteer thing and the, and the availability to the animal control or to the shelter. I mean, everybody knows that Saturday is the prime day to go adopt an animal. They have them at PetSmart and all that stuff, but, so.
Thank you, Richard. Richard, where, where do you live?
I live over in youth, 1727 Patricia Lane.
Okay, great.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick adopted Lou and Brutus, he's now Brutus, and opened his home to him. He was paralyzed on his chain on Washington Street, and we got him some rehab. And he's, he wanted to bring him inside. I guess they didn't let you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sally, Sally, listen, we appreciate it. We get the message. But we have a, we have a business meeting to do too. We still have a couple more speakers. Valerie Garner.
I live at 229 Culquitt Street in Monroe. I just got a brief comment that I wanted to make. I had not been paying attention to what was going on with animals in the area and started looking at the communication between my neighbors on Face, not Facebook, but next door. That's how I got involved with this group of people. And we have been talking back and forth about the animal shelter and how we would like for it to be open to volunteers. We would like for it to be open on Saturdays. And, and like Mr. Hill said, we want to be part of the solution. We're not here just to act like crazy rednecks, you know? We just want to be part of the solution. If there are meetings that take place because of this or that have anything to do with this, I would love to be included. I'm trying to find my little piece of paper here. Okay, I've been a proud citizen of Monroe only five years. I hope I can provide a different perspective on some of the issues involving the animal situation in Walton County. We have animals lost, missing, being run over, left out in the street. But worst of all, we have dogs being chained up in the backyards, summer and winter, with no food or water. People are breeding dogs to make a few bucks. The dogs and cats in Walton County deserve better than that than what they've gotten from us, all of us. They deserve to be protected, treated well, and they deserve to be loved. We should be good role models for the younger generation. We should be teaching the next generation to be good stewards of God's gifts. You know what's great about pets? They provide us with unconditional love. We're their humans. They don't judge you. They're soft. They can calm us down when we feel chaotic. They're protective and will be around to comfort and love our children long after we're all gone. We can feed them the same meal every day, and they don't complain. While eating dinner last February, I noticed a dog in the backyard of the next door neighbor, just sitting out in the rain. It was cold. It was February. It had been raining all week. He was chained to the kid's swing set. So this dog, this young pit bull, is sitting in the cold, wet rain, and I didn't even see a bowl of water or food and no shelter. He looks so helpless. This is not okay. I had always wanted a West Highland Terrier, and I finally rescued a girl, a dog, a girl dog named Ruby that lived with me for 11 years.
I have three messages, June.
I'm finished.
You can, you can finish if you.
Okay.
If you may, please.
Thank you. She was the most challenging pet I ever had. She hated riding in the car. She barked nonstop from the house to the vet. She had allergies and scratched until her skin bled and got infected. But I made a commitment to that dog, and she was loving and funny and the best friend I had ever had. I lost her in August of 2021. I don't know what all this is going to take to make these changes, but I'll join in and be a part of the solution. We did come here today, we didn't come here just to complain, but tried to offer some solutions as well. We have our lawbreakers do community service at the shelter. That would be a possibility. Allow volunteers to come to the shelter and play and walk the dogs, pet the cats. Let's have a jail dog program. Let's enforce the breeding, breeders licensing law, and let's unchain them.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you, everyone, for coming out and highlighting this issue again. And with that being said, we will start our regular meeting. Those of you that are welcome here.
I signed this call.
And what's your name?
Amy Carson.
I don't have you down.
My son emailed this, this is Jack's luck, I suppose. I didn't have a call, I was 20,000 before my phone died.
Sir, I don't have you down. And I think we've been repeating the same things over and over. Do you have something that we have not been made aware of?
Yes, I did. I remember voting you, and you ran, and you said that you were against tethering dogs. That's one of the reasons I voted for you. And you got the police precinct around for Lex and November. Y'all been listening to us all right? We'd love to listen to y'all. Want some of y'all to tell us your views on this? Is that a fine thing? Is it okay? Love all the people.
I've never said I thought it was okay. What I've said, once I've gotten in office, we have an ordinance against this abuse of dogs. We have prosecuted. Every month, we've taken somebody to court on that. And then others pop up. It's a never-ending. Y'all have seen the breeding. You've seen these neighborhoods in Monroe where they use them for security dogs, and then they find out they can breed them and make a couple hundred dollars more. Once you put one down, another pops up.
That's the problem.
Well, how do you solve it? Y'all have offered no solution. An ordinance doesn't stop it. An ordinance, you got to have.
And force your ordinance.
Yes, you do. Well, we're not going to argue this any longer. We have, we are going to conduct a business. Please quiet down. I'm calling our regular meeting to order. We're going to have a pledge of allegiance and invocation. And any more disruptions, I would appreciate y'all not doing. This issue's not going to be discussed by the board tonight. They haven't gotten their data from our.
They have to pay a year. Sally and Ron have been out to say a year after year after.
You show us pictures of abused dog. We take care of that abused dog. And then there's more.
No, how many are being shot?
You said abused dog, you said all the.
Please quieten down. Bailiffs, please quieten the crowd down. We're going to say the pledge of allegiance. Please show some respect to your country.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible and limited in justice for all. If you will have. That's very disrespectful. When you hear the invocation.
Father, thank you so much for this day. Please watch over us tonight as we make decisions for the county. Please be with everyone here and help them get home safe. Please watch over and guide us all tonight as we make decisions and hope we make the right one. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I'm going to call our meeting to order. And roll call, let the minutes show that five commissioners are here in person, and Bo Warren is called in to satisfy his position and his call.
Commissioner Warren, are you still present?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Sorry about that, Bo. All right, you have your agenda before you. Are there any additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
At the appropriate time, I would like to make an appointment to the Walton County Board of Appeals.
All right, we will add. To what section do I need to do? Appointments. All right, Bo Warren's appointments to Board of Appeals. All right. Any objections to that? Need a motion to make that addition to the agenda?
Second.
Have a motion in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, Planning and Zoning Commission recommendations.
Okay, let's see if I can get this. Case number is Z22070026. 7.715 acres, rezoned from A1 to B3 for business use. The applicant is Bill Hartley. The owners are John, Jeremy, and James Mizzawi and Darren Wasaleski. Property's located on Highway 78 and backs up on Tommy Dillard Road, and this is in District Four. At the Planning Commission, John Brewer represented the case. He'll be here tonight to speak, but the property's going to be used as a business park, and this gentleman has an industrial cleaning service that will be on the property. There was no opposition, and the Planning Commission recommended approval.
Okay. I'll open a public hearing on this. Planning recommendation is representative or the owner here to just answer a few questions. Tell us what you want to do.
Yes, sir. My name's John Brewer. I'm with WNA Engineering. I'm the director of surveying for our Walton County office located here in Monroe. I'm representing Mr. William Hartley. The name of his company's First Environmental. They own a company in, or they have a location, I may say, in Macon and one in Atlanta. They strategically chose Walton County to kind of ease their growing pains from having to go so far between sites. One of the questions that did arise in the Planning Commission that I, or in, in the Planning Commission that I did get a more detailed answer to, these people are not legally have the permits to haul, store, or keep any environmentally sensitive materials, liquid, whatever. They do the removal, and there's a, there is a subcontract on the job that handles all that. So there would never be any environmentally sensitive stuff hauled onto the site. And that was basically the only question that, that was asked, and I think that I addressed it well enough.
Okay, and this site, Front 78 and Tommy Dillard Road?
Yes, sir.
And the driveway will be on 78 or?
The entrance would be on Tommy Dillard Road.
On, on the highway?
On Tommy Dillard.
On Tommy Dillard. Okay, does the board have any questions or clarifications from the applicant? All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone here in support of this that would love to speak at this time? Is there anyone here in opposition of this that would love to come forward and speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve further requested purpose only with no on-site chemical storage or hazardous waste, and the entrance and exit must be
And the reason you're making the motion for the entrance and access on Highway 78?
All the other, to make it contiguous with the others, the other entrances are on Highway 78, and to begin with, planning and, not planning and zoning, but roads and bridges had requested the entrance be on Highway 78.
Planning and zoning presented, presented no request.
I said roads and bridges. That was one of the original requests of it.
Would the applicant like to come up and address this for I S for a second or something? I'll reopen the public hearing.
This project, I don't know if y'all have the, the plan that I presented or whatnot, but the lots that we propose, that we're proposing to do have 6,000 square foot warehouses. It's going to mainly be office warehouse. If you come in off of 78, it'll be a right in, right out. There's no lane to turn in in front of it on 78. The plant, the planning and development, when I submitted the plan, I sat down and talked with them about several reasons why it would be to our advantage to come off of Tommy Dillard Road. We are currently trying to purchase the smaller track in the northeast corner, and that would go along with the property. Most, those, if you're familiar with that area, you'll understand, there's not, they're pulling in and off of 78, there's not a decal lane anywhere from Tommy Dillard Road to our property. Those are all old, old, single entry driveways.
And that's one of the, so on Tommy Dillard is more of a residential on the backside of it, and it's not meant to take the larger traffic like Highway 78 is. If you notice right next door to you, their entrance and exit that I believe is the New London is on Highway 78, and they have truck storage and some other things, so it just makes it.
That's a single entrance too. It's just, there's no decal lane there.
But I believe the commissioner made a statement that our roads and bridges recommended, and.
And speaking of.
That should be part of the application process. And Turner, are you aware of roads and bridges? I'm just trying to get clarified.
Yes, sir. It was, we did get notified from roads and bridges, but it was this week. I think that they did have a comment that was sent in or that they intended to send in, but we didn't receive it in time to get it on the staff report. And I think after, y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, but after the staff report was done, they realized that their comment was not on there and wanted it to be added.
And wanted it to be added.
Yes, to have the entrance on 78 and not on Tommy Dillard.
Okay, so the Planning and Zoning Commission were not aware of this when they made their recommendation.
That is correct. That's correct.
It was submitted in the time frame of the city.
It was. I don't know if Tracy, you know, if we missed it in our office or what, but we did not have it on our staff report. Isn't that right? We didn't.
It said the third time she left our.
Well, we need to make sure the address email is getting through. Yeah, because if that, see, I didn't realize that was a problem, so.
Counsel, what do we do in a situation like this when the planning and zoning didn't have all the information?
You could, you could do however you want. You could, if there was something that you wanted, the.
I, I don't care either way. I, I'm the chairman, but I won't. I'm the chairman, but I won't, want to try to commendate the property owner and the Board of Commissioners and the roads and bridges and everything.
They did, yes, sir.
You could certainly consider their.
I'm sorry?
Certainly appropriate.
I think it's appropriate now that this has been open for the board to fully hear. Both sides?
The reason that, that we always, anytime there's a commercial rezone and it's got road frames on a commercial highway, you know, that's, that's designed to accept that, that kind of traffic, that's why we made that comment.
Can I ask a question?
Sir?
Why wouldn't you allow a drive, if Highway 78's going to be right in, right out, why would you not allow additional drive for the eastbound traffic to go out on Tommy Dillard?
Well, with six warehouses being there, the commercial traffic that'll be coming in and out of that site, Tommy Dillard Road is not built to the specs of a commercial.
Okay. All right.
So it, it won't support that traffic.
All right, well, we have, yes, sir. That's not the county's job on a state highway. That would have, that would have to be, that would have to be DOT when they get the driveway permit, and I assume there's a driveway already there, that they, there is not. Okay. But we can't require decel lane on a state road. We can on a county road. This board can do just about what they want to approve or disapprove. We have a motion to approve it with a 78-only driveway. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right. We have that motion on the table. We'll need a second to vote on it, or?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We have one opposition. Commissioner Warren? All right, it passed.
I'm, I'm in support of the new chairman.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, your yes come in late, and it sounded like an opposition. All right, it passed unanimous. All right, you have your administrative consent agenda. If everyone will have any questions or anything, we'll need a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion to approve.
I will second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes unanimous. All right, you have your resolutions, you have your budget amendments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I believe y'all have already discussed all the amendments on the amendment summary sheet except for the last one, which is item 7.1 for tonight. But for example, 1 and 4 were approved last month.
Right.
Earlier this month, I should say. We're in October, last month.
Thank you, ma'am.
And 2 and 3 have been discussed as well, so.
Okay. All right. Entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments.
Motion approved.
Second.
Yeah, a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Passes unanimous. Thank you, Milton. We're going to try to streamline these budget amendments unless it's, if it's already in the budget and budget items, we're going, we're going to try to streamline those. Approval of supplemental resolution, approving the terms of the supplemental bond resolution adopted by the Walton County Water and Sewer Authority would authorize and approves the final terms of Walton County Water and Sewer Authority revenue bonds. Walton Hard Labor Creek Reservoir Water Treatment Facility Project Series 2022. Counsel, if you'd like to elaborate, so the board.
Yeah, this is just simply a follow-up to the resolution that you adopted last month. Now that we have the final pricing terms, you're approving the resolution that they adopted, that the water authority adopted earlier today, and you're just moving forward on the bond transaction for the water treatment plant.
Okay. Any questions from Bo? This is for Hard Labor Creek Water Treatment Plant for our Walton County Water and Sewer Authority. We have representatives from bond counsel here. If you have any questions, our bonds were very popular. Actually, they got in a bidding process today and bid the interest rate down for Walton County from a 4.65 down to a 4.13, which is phenomenal. And this will be approving and accepting those bonds. So entertain a motion to move forward with this supplemental resolution.
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Tim Shalhout.
Second.
Second from Mark Banks. Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Unanimous. Okay, we move into contracts. We got a consulting agreement with Mike Martin. This will be on the Rivian Track, which is running to a slight roadblock right now. But this is if the project moves forward to contract with him for permitting and assisting our code department in handling that project down there. Do you have any questions or comments? You have the agreement before you? If not, we'd like to put this in place, so we hope, JDA hopes to get the project back on track very soon, but we're, we're going to need some help in handling it. Entertain a motion to approve the agreement.
Motion approved.
Yeah, a motion from Commissioner Banks?
Second.
We got, we'll take yours, Bo. We had several, but you got in on time, that time. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? That passes unanimous. Okay, Commissioner Warren, we're two appointments, and you have a nomination to appoint.
Yes, sir. I would ask the board to consider appointing Jim Cleveland as District 1 Representative for Walton County Board of Appeals. And that's my motion, Jim Cleveland.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second for Jim Cleveland. Please forward contact information to the Planning and Zoning so they can forward it to the Board of Appeals. Bo, we got a motion, second. I guess I better call a vote and make it official. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That passes unanimous. And we have, from the O'Kelly Memorial Library, city of Loganville, a appointment, and they've recommended Robin Deal. So I entertain a motion to appoint Robin Deal to the O'Kelly, O'Kelly Memorial Library Board.
So moved.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It passes unanimous. Okay, I'm going to switch up 9-2 and 9-1, and I'll call on our county manager to give us an update on the Good Hope Fire Station.
Thank you, sir. Temporary Station 7 is fully operational with a temporary apparatus bay. We're able to assist in any calls needed for the citizens in that territory. We set up a temporary station with one of our reserve engines. We have ordered the E1 engine, and we should have that in our possession between 11 and 12 months out. That is a delayed order, but typical of fire engines.
And the old burnt fire station's been removed and?
Public Works has handled all the clearing of debris in-house and removing any of the hazards from that burnt station in the site. It's now clean and ready for construction moving forward. We're currently hammering out the details of the new station with Jeff Prine of Ascension Program Management and Sunbelt to build a station that will meet our current demands as well as prepare us for the future. So we'll be bringing back updates of the design features of that facility as well as pricing as we move forward.
Thank you. Okay. Now back up to 9-1, possible changes to enabling legislation. And what that is, the county operates under covenants that the state legislature passed, and each county's different, and each county has their own set that the legislature passed. And Walton County is a county with a full-time chairman, and I happen to be it right now, and the salary's $99,000 a year. And we have just hired a county manager, which we're the last county of this size to acquire one in the state of Georgia. And I'm proposing that the salary consideration of the chairman be lowered and the position be made a part-time position as other large counties are. We gave you a list of counties our size and what part-time chairmen are making, and it drops drastically. It drops from $99,000 a year down $25,000 a year, which is, it's generally twice what the county commissioner makes. It's still a very active job. Our enabling legislation says that the chairman gets a vehicle. I've been using my vehicle and being reimbursed mileage. I suggest that if it's a part-time position, we recommend that the county quit furnishing a vehicle to the part-time. The county manager's position is $180,000 job plus benefits, and this would be in turn. He handles the day-to-day operations of the county, and the position of the chairman instead of handling day-to-day operations of the county is to see that the board's wishes are put forth to the different department heads and the county manager. The reason it's coming up now, there's still two years left of my term, and I donate my salary to the charities of Walton County, which everyone knows, and I did not want to put that out there for someone else unless the legislature does it. So that's up for discussion. I think Kirkland, he brought it up the minute we agreed to hire a county manager, and if it's the wishes for the board to move forward and recommend that, I think it's proper. An elected official shouldn't be running the day-to-day operations of Walton County. That's a bureaucratic job. In times past, we've had some chairmans that kind of overexiled on, on those responsibilities, and we're large enough now that we need a professional running our day-to-day business, and most businesspeople will tell you that. We don't have to vote on this tonight. If we do it by the end of the year, the legislative team can put it before the Georgia Legislature and get our covenants changed to match what is done. But I would like for this board to consider that, to look at lowering it, lowering the, there's no need to provide a part-time vehicle on the county's dime. They can use their own vehicle and get reimbursed like I do. They're not going to lose any money doing that. Right now, we get 61 cents a mile, and Walton County is a big county, and you can put some miles on a vehicle. But, and like to entertain, this discussion needs to be made in public. Like to entertain comments, ideas from the board. If they want to look into it a little more and then make comments next meeting, that's fine. I'd like to see how the board feels about it, and we can start to my left and come to my right, if that's okay. And Bo, you're a W, so you're last. Kirkland, would you like to make any comment on it either way?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would like to consider this, talk about it tonight, and then maybe bring it for discussion at next month's meeting for discussion and for a vote, but not tonight. I think it's a little too soon to.
Oh, I don't expect a decision made tonight.
Yeah, I'm more than willing to talk about it and talk about it in November.
Okay.
See everything in writing that you're proposing, and then vote on it.
Okay. Commissioner Adams?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Commissioner Bradford?
I'd like to, I'm fine with going forward and discussing it. I'd like to get some public input and make sure that we're making a decision of that of the county, you know, the citizens in the county, not just for ourselves.
Commissioner Shalhout?
I'm all for it.
Commissioner Banks?
Yeah, I feel like when we changed and went to a county manager, we actually changed our form of government slightly, and I think we need to explore changing the compensation for that.
And?
The time went down considerably, I think you'll agree with that.
It took some pressure off of me. I don't have to deal with very embarrassing things, maybe like a sexual harassment complaint or stuff like that. Politicians shouldn't be dealing with those, so.
Now, Mr. Chairman, this, this couldn't change during your term, could it?
It could, it could if y'all decide, but I run on a set salary and set conditions, and I don't think it's fair to the charities. I pledged my salary to jerk out away from them. Should I be talked into running again, I'll be running on whatever y'all decide. But this, I think the proper way to do is let the legislature do it and it be for the next term, and we need to do it now, so anybody thinking about running for this seat will know what they're running for. There'll be other items to discuss on it. Right now, the spending limits of the clerk, us is all limited in this legislation, and some of it's $5,000. Well, you, we're constantly having to get board approval on stuff that's already in the budget. That's 5,000 that we, we can't approve without board approval. We need to raise those limits, you know, 20, 25,000 so we can function without keep backing up. But we'll, we'll discuss it again, and if you want to have a work session on this with public comment, Commissioner Bradford, I'm fine with that. We will set it up before the November meeting, and we will go from there.
You forgot Commissioner Warren.
Commissioner Warren?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I.
I'm getting, thank you, Kirkland. I'm not looking at you, Bo, and now your valued opinion, please, sir.
I'm, I'm very much supportive of this, of this idea. I wish we were making the decision tonight. One thing I would strongly suggest is at our November meeting that we be squared away to make that decision and give our legislators ample time in December to go ahead and have the legislation drafted so it can be introduced just as, absolutely soon as possible in the year.
Well, we will try to hold a public meeting on this prior to the November meeting and see where we at there, and hopefully have something to propose in the November meeting, Commissioner Warren. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. I have an announcement to make. Tea splash is on the ballot. T-Splosh is on the ballot. I can't ask you to vote for it or against it, but it's a transportation 1%,. We're holding a public meeting here tomorrow night to answer questions, take comments, or anything that the public might want to comment on the projects. We'll have the projects highlighted, and we're going to just take public comments, and 6 o'clock tomorrow night here, it's just a meeting so the board can, you know, meet some of the public, meet some of the problems in the areas. We've outlined DOT's main problems. T-Splosh, if it were to be passed, it gets matching from Georgia DOT on some of these large projects and large state road concentrations that we have in the county that do need addressing, but we will have it here, and everyone's welcome to come, 6 o'clock until the last question's asked, where we'll be here till the cows come home, so to say. Is there any other comments by the board?
Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. We had a lot of passionate people here earlier tonight in support of animal rights, and, you know, some speaking in support of our animal control department. I think a lot of members of the board know where I stand on the tethering and the kennel size, minimum kennel size. I would like to ask that we have a work session or that we be prepared to take a vote next month on no tethering and kennel size, or at least have the work session to discuss it with animal control. We're over 100,000. We've just hired a fire marshal. Things have changed in this county, and I think we need to, I think we need to do like some of the surrounding counties and make a stand and make some changes for animals in Walton County.
Okay, thank you. If you'll get with the county manager and look at the calendars and see what night is appropriate, we can set that up.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Appreciate our three mayors being here tonight. Thank you, guys.
All right, thanks, everyone, for coming out. Sometimes it's a difficult job, but we have to hear it all, and that's very appreciative. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Bo.
Thank you, Bill.
We'll see you later.